Thank you. Welcome to the council, everybody. Apologies for accents, we need to probably receive those. So councillor Collins is Pauline, councillor June and councillor White both way.
Thank you. We have no members of the public present, so we don't have a public session.
Any declarations of interest at this point? So we move on to minutes, we've got a lot of minutes. To agree as a correct record, we support councillors on Monday the 21st of March. That was the extraordinary meeting in relation to campaign prices. Not just such room.
I positively agree those minutes, um, this explanatory.
Everybody happy with that?
Yes.
Minutes on Monday the 28th of March.
Great, great.
Interim minutes on Monday the 9th of May. Planning Committee, councillor Cole.
Thank you, ma'am. If I may present minutes of the planning committee, Monday 4th of April and Monday 9th of May. There's no recommendations. Thank you.
Are you happy with those? Thank you. And councillor.
I want to note, we need to count any events as we go through the next bit. I'd just say I look forward to all of us together during the forthcoming Platinum Jubilee event. The good mark will be represented as so many as our mayor, but I'd like to see as many of us there as possible. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stutbro. And everybody happy with that?
Yep.
Agreed.
Environment Committee, I'll, um, councillor Shaker.
I'm not even sure I was at that meeting, but I think I better propose meetings or the, or the minutes to the meeting.
Thank you. Everybody happy with the Environment Committee?
Yeah.
And resources, councillor Doherty.
Thank you, ma'am. So we've got the meeting on the 16th of May. If we can agree those, and we've got one recommendation. So. Oh yeah, we have. So we've got the annual term for 21, 22. And we've got to approve the annual government's governance statement, and that's Penex A, and then approve the counter statements. And then we've got the recommendation for councillors to propose it in what reserves.
Thank you councillor Stutbro.
How is that for the results of meeting the chairman to put through meetings on their hand, that we agree then?
So can I just clarify that for the item 8.1, 8.2, we need to specifically agree those two items in order, myself and chair need to sign them once they're both agreed.
We have to agree those.
Yeah.
Yeah, so 8.3 agree.
Agree.
Which one of you determine, 8.1?
Yeah, 8.1 agree.
And 8.2.
Everybody agree.
We didn't.
Well, we agreed on it tonight, if they thought.
Yeah. Some kind of.
At 8.3 incoming expenditure report recommendations is a penitent C. Councillor Stutbro.
I positively agree these, they've discussed them, and if any other member knows something that.
Does it fail?
I know.
So councillor.
Thank you. So there was just one thing on, so it's said it's page one, but on in the agenda is page 17 of 197. And where it's in the last box under comments by the town clerk. And 6.18, it's any debit card issued for use will be specifically restricted to the clerk. Can we make sure we have town clerk rather than just clerk? That might make sense.
Sorry, yes, that might make sense. Yes, yes.
And then also, a couple of lines after it says, unless authorised by council or finance committee, we don't have finances resources now. I'll change that on. And I think that is all.
Can you just clarify where that goes?
Yeah, so it is in the agenda, page 17 of 197. And then in the comments by the town clerk box, in the last column, three boxes down, so there's a last corner. And then it's 6.18, under any debit card issued for use will be specifically restricted to the clerk, just to change, just to add town by. And then lines down, it says finance committee, its resources, usually finance committee, but its resources now. Okay.
And does that automatically read the town clerk or deputy town clerk? So if we don't have a town clerk.
Yeah, I think resources needs to review this.
Right.
But yeah, no.
It is specifically town clerk. Did I see councillor Pauline?
Yeah, just checking, this is a quote, where's the quote from?
Is it from the Orton? It's the box that councillor Pauline used. So yeah, that's, that's a quote from our, what our financial regulations say.
Oh, right.
And they've been revised.
Yes, because we agreed earlier in the year. So it's just confirmed the decision we made earlier. It's not as much as what the council will come to discuss.
It's already taken some time.
Thank you. Is everybody happy with, with that amendment?
Those changes, yes.
Yes, yeah, agreed.
Thank you.
Sherry, I just want to let me jump over, I had to be in my reserves.
Okay, thank you.
No, we didn't.
So.
Agreed.
In what reserves? Everybody happy with that?
Agreed.
Thank you. Annual town meeting, we received a full report from the Estates Administrator regarding the public meeting on the 24th of March. Councillor Stutbro.
I agree, agree them, chairman, it's an accurate record of what took place. And then review what we do for the next annual town meeting, that's the appropriate kind. And actually, if we want to, it's a record of what took place, who said what and who did what, and who was there. And that's really what we asked to be done, so can't amend them because we can't amend what took place.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's great to see this. I think there's a lot of detail in this, at least further consideration. So I would, I would propose that we refer this back to the Environment Committee for some more detail looking at, to pull out any recommendations that are worth pursuing further.
But I suggested it be to refer it to the relevant committee for each action, it does give the responsibility.
Oh, okay, yes, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
Keep on happy with that?
Agreed.
We have to make sure that we do follow things through, and that's the best way of doing that, you know. And I noticed that one of the recommendations, we should have a store on climate change at every public event. And a town clerk to confirm, to confirm that there is one on Thursday to celebrate Buckingham Day. And I also noticed, I'm not sure, there was also a town crisis stall at the recent flood event on May 17th. So also specifically to do with climate change, it's about flooding, so it's.
Well, just to say, having attended the event, I thought it was very well attended. And I noticed that they're there, and our officers are there, working hard throughout the day. Hope that we, they get recognition for what their contributions were. They were there all day, and when I came back late in the day, after doing some offices in the town, they were still there. And it was one day, and they did an excellent job, and we should, our thanks to our officers for supporting that event. Especially as it was a bit of an initiative from our offices.
Thank you. Councillor Amy.
Yeah, it's brilliant. So I'm just picking up what you said, town clerk. Is it, is it summarised in the end? Because it was on page 30 of 197, it talks about your bike parking and so forth. It doesn't specifically say, so you allow that go to planning committee, is that somewhere else somewhere?
Yes, so if you look at page 21 of 197, that's where Nina's put in the proposed changes to the plan. And then in the middle, it gives the committee free to run the revised changes.
Oh, yeah.
So it'll be free to committee to receive those in assistance. Right, okay, got it.
It's a very thorough report.
Yeah, just cross check.
And Nina's. Yeah. Finding the issue. So item 10 action list. So we need to, I mean, maybe we do spot any issues on the action list. Town on the agenda. So. I think most of the things have been. I think there's no other points on the actions. Item 11, Mayoress's slash Mayor's Consort Change Options, we have a report from the town clerk. About that.
Just to summarise, that we have the historic chain, and we have the new. So the proposal is that we allow male or female consorts to choose which they wish to use.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, that's reasonable. Yeah, councillor Stutbro.
No problem with that, apart from that, that we have to recognise that the actual silver chain with the front of it was given by Mr George Roper. To actually recognise the fact that the Mayoress, as he was at the time of those days, they never was a male consort. Because very rarely there was a female man. So I think it's appropriate to use it, but just change our text at mayor making to respect that change. Because in the text that we say at mayor making, it says, you know, it's all a bit about George Roper and the fact that he gave us the silver front is defined. We need to say that the council has taken the decision to allow mayor consorts to wear it as well. I think that's just what we need as history moves on. And it's just otherwise, we'll say something to the public, which someone else will come along and say, well, why are you wearing the chain? Because it's for the Mayoress, not my consort, I think we just need to cut that out.
That makes sense. Very happy with that. I think that persuaded my consort to wear it at least once. Item 12, councillor Paul.
Thank you, ma'am. You'd all be aware, there's been a lot of anger in the town about Lloyds, the last bank in town closing. There's nothing we can do about it, but I thought for the good of our people, we should actually have a motion tonight that Buckingham Town Council is dismayed that Lloyds Bank PLC is not honouring the pledge made by all banks in 2014 to keep at least one open in towns where all the others have closed. Lloyds, the last bank in Buckingham, is going to close in September 2022, citing lack of customer visits over the past year. Partly surprising in Covid pandemic. We have to reluctantly accept this is going to happen, along with 23 other Lloyds branches. But we do call on Lloyds to work with the post office and others to provide Buckingham with a banking hub accessible to our rapidly growing population. Thank you. If I can propose that.
Thank you. Second, councillor June.
Second that.
Yeah, I'm happy for the motion, but it is worth noting, isn't it, that the advert that we watch on telly every night states that they're going to stay with us? Technically, that isn't true, is it? They're leaving us. So perhaps they should amend it, you stay with you as long as we wish to, because they are leaving Buckingham. So I like watching the horses, and I like watching, because I'm a great lover of animals. But it just seems a shame that the advert on telly has no bearing to Buckingham whatsoever now. And also, maybe we should do some publicity around it through the mayor and mayor. Because quite frankly, going councillor Cole's publicity over the post box the other day, that seemed to change the mind of the post office, which was from the planning committee. So perhaps we should do something similar, on the, on the hope that Lloyds Bank, while they're still open, have a reconsideration of their position. We also, it's worth noting that Lloyds Bank is the bank that Buckingham Town Council has used to start being. And, and no longer will be in the town. And that's something worth noting, that we haven't got a bank in the town for our own affairs, doing our own business. I think, I'd like to propose that we do some press release around that, about the fact and the evidence and the basic round the advert that they're going to stay with us, because that's their own words, not our words, and they are not staying with us. Horses are galloped off to another, another county. But you can go to Bradley, and they're in Bradley, you can go to other parts of Buckinghamshire, and then Buckinghamshire. Buckingham is the town that gave the county the name of Buckinghamshire. And that is quite a statement, that they've walked away from Buckingham, so in effect, they've walked away from Buckinghamshire. Buckingham is the town that gives the county its name. So I think on that basis, let's tickle them a little bit, and just maybe somebody on a very large salary who's managed to vote themselves a pay rise while everybody else can't, might actually think, well, perhaps I ought to keep the bank open in Buckingham. Funny that, it's historically significant.
Councillor Harvey, then councillor.
Obviously, I support the question too, and I agree with councillor Stutbro's suggestion that we should definitely produce a press release. The actual catch line that they use in the advert with the horses is always by your side. So I think the headline of the, the press release should be not always by your side. And, and make pointless, as it would be saying that towns like Buckingham do need banking facilities for a whole heap of local business reasons. And definitely we should encourage them to take part. We've heard rumours that there may well be some sort of banking hub. I think all you can do is encourage them to be part of that.
Councillor.
Thank you, madam, ma'am. I don't know if anybody else noted it, but last week on South Today BBC, they did feature Buckingham and Lloyds closing, and get a bit of a vox pop. And at the latter end of that, they were talking fairly clearly about the possibility of having a multi-bank hub. Now, what do they say? The proof of the pudding is in the eating. Nevertheless, it was stated fairly clearly, so it will be interesting to see if that comes to pass.
Anybody else want? I did wonder, oh, councillor Harrington.
I might just note that having just visited the answer silly, I noticed that Lloyds Bank is closed. And there was a sign in the window that said, we are trying a hub, and we will be reviewing it in September. So I think even if they are persuaded to do a hub, one has to keep a very watchful eye on that as well.
And make sure that if we get one, we use it.
Well, we used the bank for that, didn't we?
Yeah, I get it, true.
I, I did wonder, you know, I get invited to open various premises, whether I had to go along and tie a ribbon across the door and not.
You should do that.
I'm not sure that was right. Looking very serious, councillor.
That's an excellent idea.
I'm happy to check on that, ma'am.
Can I just suggest you remember, it is rather good, and we could get, probably someone like Art Bard or someone else just to play tie yellow ribbon around the old bank or something, as it, because it was a sentimental song, and we could play a yellow ribbon.
I like the guy's.
I could get a black horse, maybe, get a black horse, maybe, how it comes to my.
She might have to boot polish it, John.
But she might have a black horse.
And those in favour of that motion, be sure.
She done this.
Thank you.
Is that the ribbon motion?
That's the ribbon motion. I think I did know.
You all understand that wasn't my motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. And now item 13, again councillor Paul.
Sorry to monopolise things, ma'am, but I thought we couldn't pass Milton Keynes being awarded city status without congratulating him. I lived in Stoke Hammond in 1967, when Milton Keynes was announced. It was actually announced as the new city of Milton Keynes. Well, if the first you don't succeed, try, 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 try again, and at the fourth attempt, they've got it. So congratulations to our neighbour Milton Keynes on attaining city status in this Her Majesty, the Queen's Platinum Jubilee Year. Buckingham looks forward to continuing to work with Milton Keynes to the benefit of each of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need, I don't need to debate this, shall we? Those in favour?
Yeah.
Thank you. Receiving question reports from Buckinghamshire, councillor Stutbro, we have Adey and Rogan. Adey, start.
I'm just going to practise start. I'll start with the report on the Tullman Road and the fact that councillors have approved the reduction speed limit there to 30. I'd also like to update the council on the helping support schemes that have been going on. There's £150, which I know residents have been receiving there to the mailboxes. Jubilee celebrations as well, quite a few, or not a few, most of our villages around Buckingham are having celebrations on the Jubilee. And lots of what has also come from the council in that regard. The council's also set up a customer service VIP help line, I believe the town clerk is aware of that. Where we could have direct access to council officers. I would also like to touch on, I think there's a scheme that's going on, private foster, where the councillors are encouraging people who knows, anybody who is under the ages of 16 or 18, and is leaving with someone who's not their parent or guardian or brother, should please notify the council. So that appropriate measures can be taken by the guard. And I'm happy to take any questions or any objections.
What's that last one?
Private foster.
Thank you. Thanks. And.
Yeah, I just think, I know, before I say what, I don't know councillor Paul what to ask me some questions, and then I'll give a report on. And when I have, and that you ask me a question, I'll.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, in fact, it's going to be both to yourself and to councillor Ozzy Bogum, because he started his report tonight saying we've got the Tindrichs Road speed limit. This is news to the cabinet member for Trump, who has told us he will not be making his decision until June. Not only that, but two of our non-Buckingham Town Council, Buckinghamshire councillors posted this on Facebook on Friday, congratulating themselves and everyone on getting the speed limit in Tindrichs Road and Buckingham Ring Road to 30 miles an hour. Well, I've gone into this quite heavily, looking at Buckinghamshire Council democracy. It is still absolutely clear, the decision will not be announced until June 2022. And I'd like to know where our ward councillors, who are shouting about this, have managed to get this information, thank you.
Let me try and help. What basically is, there's a decision on the 13th of April to defer the application by the leader of the council. I've gone due diligence ready, I didn't want to comment on the Facebook page, because I'd already read the decision notice, because I attend Cabinet, which said it was going to be in June. So I've been to officers, and they've copied that information to all Buckinghamshire councillors in Buckingham. What basically happens is decision's been deferred, there has been no decision to reduce the speed limit. The website, if you look at Buckinghamshire Council website, there is no decision on Tindrichs Road. There have been no decisions done here, much of we all here want to have that, there is no legal paperwork supporting it. I took up a conversation, because I knew that it would come up tonight, so I took a conversation with the relevant officer today and asked him, could I have sight of the paper? And he said, well, you can't have sight of a legal set of paperwork, councillor Stutbro, which hasn't been determined. When it's been determined, you can have it. So at some point, that will go, the decision is going to be, it's still in consultation with the police. And I furnished the town clerk with the relevant information, and you will find there's nothing on the website to it. Last decision notice on 13, not taken by the cabinet member, but taken by the leader of the council, 13th of April, happened to be my birthday. And I was pretty occupied that day with choosing to rally it, so I probably didn't spot it. So I did arrange something, and I was quite concerned, because what we can't have, councillor Cole, is a statement which has gone out saying something's going to happen, and it hasn't happened, because I've been on the town council for very many, many years. I also was a member of the council when many members who were not here today worked on the local plan. And many members of this town council fought strongly to have the principle of a 30 mile an hour limit there. So if anyone's achieved anything, the communities achieved it eventually, if that's the case, for the weight of pressure. But the decision still has to be taken by the cabinet member, the decision has to be taken, contiguous in, in action with the law. And at that point, the officer is still in discussions. There is correspondence, every Buckinghamshire councillor's had it this morning. They, I was corresponded at 8:45 this morning, and I spoke to the officer after that, before I came to a meeting of the town council at 10 o'clock. So I think it's a real sad day, that for whatever reason possible, two of our local councillors have decided to announce an announcement before it ever happened. And I think that's unfortunate, because what we have to practise in being a local authority councillor is to stick to the actual facts, do due diligence and check them out before you make an announcement. Because now, I looked on the local Facebook page, which I didn't comment on, because it's a legal decision. And I didn't want to comment on a legal decision, why it hadn't, thought it hadn't been taken. And consequently, there is no legal decision. The paper was there, anyone can find it out, it's unfortunate. That's the facts, and it's for them to answer why. Myself, in my own work as a Buckinghamshire councillor, I have, you would have noticed that Buckinghamshire Council's cabinet at the last meeting has agreed to do a business plan to look at providing additional social housing in Buckinghamshire, looking at its portfolio of properties to do that. You will remember, we discussed it in 2020, that we was taking a motion, which was partly to do with the conversation around this table about the need for social housing, and I was conscious of that at Buckinghamshire, I should take the feelings and thoughts of people here. Cabinet listened, Cabinet is now moving forward, and that will be dealt with by councillor John Chilver, who's now, it's part of his portfolio for delivering that project, which is marvellous. You'll also note that Buckinghamshire Council agreed a way forward, the details on the website, about focusing on through poverty at the last council meeting, which is a really big thing, everyone was in agreement, eventually on how to go forward with it. But that's gone forward. I'll also be attending a health scrutiny meeting at the end of the month. I'll be attending Cabinet on the 7th, because you'll notice in the written questions, responses to Cabinet, to one of my colleagues, it mentions the people who are involved in the Buckingham neighbourhood plan consultation. I thought it was a little bit phenom of players who were involved in it. So I've gone for some clarity, and we'll be going for clarity of Cabinet on those issues. I won't get into detail, but it's important that we know, when dealing with Buckinghamshire council, that your Buckinghamshire councillors can be fully involved, and therefore that Buckingham Town Council can be fully involved. So I'm doing that, and I've also given several responses to health documents from the studio of the House, which I've been asking by the chairman. One of whom was to do with reporting on Marlow. I attended a meeting in Marlow to look at the services in Marlow, on how those services were wrapped out, which were basically, remember, those of us who were here, we had that in 2019, we had a good day service, and we all attended a meeting in the community centre. That was basically what played out in South Buckinghamshire, which removed the community hospital. We've had an agreement in Buckinghamshire Council, and thanks to the chair and I working together, that we got Buckinghamshire Health Trust saying on the record, they have no intention of shutting Buckingham Hospital, so we've achieved that between us all. And, and now we move on to how they wrap the service out to Buckingham, how we deal with people in the community. Because they want to do a more community-based service, which has got some logic in it. So that will have to come back for a consultation. Also, we've had the preliminary responses to the, have a Swan Practice response to the consultation. I cannot comment on that, but I suggested the town clerk write to Swan Practice to ask for the copy of the consultation, which should go to the next Environment Committee. And then, it would be, my opinion is, it would be the committee's decision on the response to that also. Thank you, other things one's been doing, but, but if you look at the way, you will notice that we've got some roadworks on to place, which seems successful. The roadworks which have took place were put in in 2014, so it's only taken to 2022 to get them. The roadworks which have took place were put in in twenty fourteen, so it's only taken to twenty twenty two to get them done. So that's really tremendous. And the roadworks are intended to be done by the Lidl area, which has been frustrating members for a long time. And it's councillor Cole has raised it and councillor Honig has raised it and many other members have raised frustrations. I also attended a meeting last week online to discuss the proposals for a development on the, on the OZ Way, which will probably come to planning, to have my own personal conversation around the possible actress site on OZ Way, which I'm entitled to do as an officer. I suggest that that's something that councillor Mark Cole will lead on for the town council. My job as an odd councillor is to diligently follow these things up and I have to. But there's plenty of other things one's done. But I do, for myself, I really apologise that, that the community has been effectively misinformed about this. And it's a bettable thing because it's misinforming people on things like the thirty limit. And which is a big aspiration of this council, is a regretful situation. And I'm expected to be office today.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
I did listen to councillor Mark Cole clearly and then I understand he's had correspondence with the cabinet member. If you could share that correspondence with me and have to take it up with him and also with my call councillors as well. If you could, I'd really appreciate that because I do understand that that was approved. But yes, I'd like to hear what makes it.
Thank you, ma'am. I haven't had correspondence of the cabinet member. I took it from the Buckinghamshire Council Democracy Cabinet papers, which have been in public purview, decision due June twenty twenty two by cabinet member for transport. If I could just address what's happened, I'm obliged to councillor Stutford, who was from Legal Services, got the same result I got from this, that it's not been approved. Buckingham Town Council, particularly the planning committee, has been working with the developers of St Nambold's Way since twenty fifteen, when David Wilson Barrett came to us and said, there is a presumption that Tindric Road will be thirty miles an hour and we'd like twenty mile an hour feeders off that into our estate. We've been working for seven years on this now and I personally take it as personal insult that we've been hijacked by two councillors. I'm going to name them, in public domain, it's councillor Cornell and councillor Feeley. Put this post up on Friday, which is wrong, it's fake news. And I would propose that this council asks them to withdraw that statement, which is on Buckingham, what matters, because this is fake news, it is not being approved. And there's been so much backlash on this. On Saturday, I was accosted by a lot of people in the town centre saying, why are you making the bypass thirty miles an hour? We're not. They said, oh, we've read it, it's there. It's stated in black and white by councillors Cornell and Feeley. So what's going on? So my proposal is that we ask councillor Cornell and Feeley to withdraw that statement from Buckingham what matters and put, if necessary, an apology. Thank you.
Yeah. Another town how interesting.
Yeah, just to add one, one thing to discussion. So last week, Thursday or Friday, Buckinghamshire Council published on their website a whole list of traffic orders, which included speed limits. And on Thursday or Friday, that site did include Tindric Road. Buckinghamshire Council now remove that from that website. So information available from Buckinghamshire Council has changed, presumably because it was included in error by our officers, I would assume, who have now clarified that errors made and they now will draw it. So the legal person may have seen on thirteen jumped into the gun without checking it.
I'll just come back on that. No, I have to come back here to leave matter. The fact is that you've got the correspondence in the office that the decision was taken on the thirteenth. The, we do have to stay very close to the margins on these things. Councillor, and I believe AD has got that email because it was sent to him at ten sixteen. So if you look in your email, you can see that AD, so I'm not wrong for you. It's nothing to do with you, yeah. And so you can look at that. And the reason the website is amended is I emailed the officer to actually point out that their website wasn't in conformity with their legal documents. So that's why it's amended. And the officer was actually doing it and I'm not going to name, you never name an officer in a meeting and that's in pride. The officer is, was mortified that that took place. But nevertheless, I've been a councillor for a number of years and I've always known that when it comes to legal matters, do due diligence before you open your mouth, it's always a good thing.
Okay. I've got second motion. Sorry. I've got second motion. Your second motion, councillor Harvey, you want to sound up?
Yeah, I mean, obviously I have a, a small fear that this miscommunication could damage the final decision. And that would be a very, 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 very big worry, that would be the case. I do agree with councillor Colby that we should ask councillors, for now, the presidio site of it, for an explanation as to what happened. I also think it's important that they issue a clear notice as to what the situation actually is. Because I first wanted, because councillor Ozzy Bogum shared it on another Facebook site. I then, in good faith, as I'm sure you did, shared it on Buckingham what matters because it was a big decision. Somebody else pointed out, you do the ring road, which I overlooked, I just sorted the road. And then a huge, huge debate has then happened. People saying, what, thirty miles an hour on the, on the bypass, that's ridiculous. And it's created a whole fear of that need not happen. And like I say, I worry that this could, this could change the actual result. I sincerely and honestly hope not. But I do think we should be asking the councillor, councillors concerned, whoever put those up for a clear explanation and a public statement that can be shared with equal amount of, of, of profile. So that can be assured to what the situation is and when the final decision will actually be taken.
Thank you. Does sound so, from what the town clerk said, it's a genuine mistake and misunderstanding, but it does seem to me as well that the situation needs to be clarified by the individual's perspective.
Yes, I would say.
Can we vote on that? Those in favour of that action, Fisher?
Sorry, what's the action?
The action is, as councillor Colby said, to ask the two councillors to clarify what's happened and make a statement on the appropriate Facebook.
Apology.
But I asked them to, my proposal was they withdraw it.
They withdraw it.
We didn't have that interest.
Can you, can you redit that again? Oh, we've got off call it, can you?
Well, I'm sure.
So we're clear. So councillor Colby proposed that Buckingham Town Council ask them to withdraw information from Buckingham what matters and to apologise.
Thank you.
Those in favour of that motion, Fisher?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Those against any exceptions?
One, two, three, four.
So moving on, item fifteen, rainbow flag. We've got a report from the town clerk and the recommendation to that the council flies a rainbow flag on the first of June each year to celebrate the beginning of Pride Month. Councillor Donnelly?
Yeah, I'm happy to go to recommendation, ma'am.
Thank you. Councillor Willis?
I'm more than happy to support this. Anything to make our town more welcoming? Oh, sorry. Anything to make our town more welcoming and tolerant of any form of community? I think that what unites us is, as British people, is our acceptance and tolerance as others. And I'm more than happy to support this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Harvey? Yeah, I think this is great. Because the point is, I hope the flag is the full LGBTQ plus flag with all the colours, obviously the rainbow colours, plus the transgender colours as well, the colour V that happens. I think, if not, next year it should be.
Point of admission, I haven't checked it, but we have bought the flag, okay, as instructed. So if it isn't fully coloured.
Well, nobody's buying it, it's rainbow, 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 that, and then there's that could be coming in, that sort of shape, which has the transgender.
Now, now you've said that, I can picture what you mean, councillor Harvey. But it needs to be phoned tomorrow.
Yes, so we will, I just say, we'll find what we have tomorrow and if we need a more appointment next year, we'll do that.
Wednesday.
Okay, or sorry, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
And, and secondly, could I propose that we have a sermon, a short ceremony, with the mayor, hoist the flag at a certain time, so that those of us who wish to be can be there. And also any of those that continue want to be there as well. And we announce that.
I did ask about that when, when I saw this some while ago and I was told it, the proposal was just to host the flag and I now have another commitment at ten o'clock on Wednesday. But unless we did it at a slightly different time.
And could the deputy town clerk, if she's available?
Unfortunately, I'm not here on Wednesday, so I would otherwise, yeah, I know. We'll take that as right.
We could arrange it about that sort of one, or didn't you?
Well, I can't be there at ten o'clock. So, we need to agree this now, don't we? Because it's the day after tomorrow. Go on.
It was Ryan who suggested this at town centre events. And Ryan represents the community. And in this instance, if Ryan is available, I think it'd be a nice thing for Ryan to raise the flag. He's very happy to do that. And, and, and I think it was his initiative that the events posed this and went through. And I think if both the mayor and deputy mayor are happy with that, and, and if either one's available, they can then, because I think it's, it shows continuity with the position, continuity with the action and continuity with the person who raises it.
Agreed.
I think you're right.
I agree with you.
Yeah. So are you available, Ryan?
You're not going to be on all the time yet. Two o'clock almost.
Okay, so that, people happy with that?
Yeah, agreed. Yeah. Good man.
I think particularly because, that's not. I think particularly because it's the first time we've blown it as well, and it's important to mark it. It's even just a bit more than just raising the flag. So thank you, we've got a sensible way forward. That's the bucking team.
That flag roll out there, did you move it?
Yeah. That was there.
Yeah, I was struggling that more than.
It's on Wednesday, not tomorrow.
On Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, Wednesday is the first. Just so we're clear on that.
I can do it.
Wednesday, Wednesday.
I can't be there.
Wednesday, the first of June.
All right.
Item sixteen, Buckingham's sport and crane. We've had a written report from the communications bar. And it's recommended that we note the report, councillor Stutford.
I did note in the report, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Mayor, that the next meeting is going to be on the third of June.
Yeah.
Having helped one family directly, and I assume what Madam Mayor's done and the officers have done supporting the local effort, I think it's a very good thing and he just carried on. Less said on these things, trumping what he did and more something what they need to die for.
Thank you. Councillor Donnelly?
Thank you, ma'am. It said that the group has got a chair, treasurer and a secretary. Is there any way of us knowing who they are? I thought it might be nice to have it in the report. And the end where it says next meeting on the last page, it says a representative from the Shire Council will attend the meeting. Are we, are they just going to attend to that one meeting or is there going to be a breakfast? Going to be involved in this group because it's quite important. They're the lead council, they're the holder of the money, the housing, the health, the wealth, the education. So we're doing this to support the Ukrainians, but we need their support, the Shire Council. So I would hope that it's not just that one meeting they're going to be coming to, they are on the group.
Well, we have to clarify that, but that is quite clear, the Buckinghamshire council is working extremely hard with designated officers, working hard, very quickly, getting up and running with all the procedures they've got to do.
Yeah, I just.
And I'm sure that they support the meeting where possible, but we can check that out.
Yeah, thanks. Just, just for information, when, I can assure you that there's an officer team which have, in Buckinghamshire council, have done this in conjunction with the, there's an assigned officer to it. My experience has been tremendous when I've asked for them to sort out issues. They've done it as quickly as possible, with the least fuss as possible and with full confidentiality. And, and like, but these things have to be kept in a confidential, I mean, because these people are vulnerable and what we know about them should be through a safe portal, I think. And I know Madam Mayor's in touch for these things. And at the onset of this, they both spoke to the right officers at the right time with this group, that group's in touch with these, the right officers, and they have access to everything, which I know you work in safeguarding, as I know where you're coming from. And, and I can assure you, they've been really good. And they solve it in two days, one problem, they solved it by the next day. So I don't, you can complain about that, what they've done, or not that we are, but they've been an excellent team now here. And we should write, at some point, write a letter of thanks to them for what they've done.
We're happy to receive them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Item seventeen, the police require permission or response. We've all received the response, councillor Colby?
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I originally raised this, two items. One was the cancellation of a fourteen million pound IT system for Thames Valley with two other forces. I also complained about the fact we'd had consultation about the closing of police counters. Although fifty-one percent of people were against it, Thames Valley Police in its wisdom still decided to go ahead with it. We approached Mr Barber last September, the new police commissioner. It took him until April to reply to us. He has profusely apologised. He also made the point that he was not the commissioner at that time, although of course he was deputy commissioner. He ends the, his email to us saying, I'd be happy to attend a meeting of the town council to discuss these locally and work together to make Buckingham even safer. So I propose we take him up on that offer.
Thank you.
Yeah, agreed.
And Ray, you seconding that?
I'd also second that, of course. I would say that there was a slightly worrying statement in the letter being sent back. It's trying to pull out the similar. There is a point to be learned about collaboration. Whilst I'm very supportive of the benefits of working with thirteen other forces, that sounds like it's a lot of very successfully true. I have been clear to the force that future collaborations should have a clear justification and not be collaboration for the sake of it. I guess my concern about that is that sounds like, is if, when you're on the police force and you're looking to collaborate with other, other forces, if you adopt the view that every project must be absolutely to your benefit, then it's never going to happen. Because when there's an array of projects happening, I don't know, be it, I don't know, witness protection or be it IT or be it HR or whatever it happens to be, if you adopt that kind of granular approach, then the chances are there will be some projects which are most beneficial to another force and maybe next, I mean negligible benefit, say Thames Valley Police, might even be a smaller disadvantage, Thames Valley. The greater good it serves by, say, working with, I don't know, Hampshire or Warwickshire, wherever the other forces are. If they adopt a project by project granular approach, then that's going to undermine any attempts to get proper collaboration happening between various forces. And I speak with experience, I once spent a year as the director of collaboration for the six eastern police forces, Edinburgh, Essex, Suffolk and so on. And I, and I saw what happened there. That kind of granular approach gets in the way of a broad strategy to genuinely pull resources for the, for the public benefit. And that's an issue that I would very much be happy to raise with the PTC when it comes, one of our future leaders. It's a professional point, but I think a very fundamental.
Thank you. Councillor Donnelly?
Thank you, ma'am. Similar to councillor Harvey, there was a few statements that I thought were a bit off, where it says, I've put in place new governance framework to ensure adequate oversight of such large scale projects. So there wasn't one before he put this in and I find that quite shocking. And I have responsibility to hold the chief accountable and to ensure adequate governance. That's just words. So what is he putting in the, the chief inspector to account? What is, what's he doing? His words are fine, but just saying it doesn't mean that he's doing anything about it. So yeah, I've, I've found the, the governance framework bit, had that in the fore.
Thank you. Councillor Stutford?
Yeah, I'm probably lucky than most, I've had a couple of oppo- I've had a couple of opportunities to question that. And, and you know, while there's lots of changes going on, one of the things you have to be minded about is, there's, with all the things which are really big every fortnight or three quarters an hour from London, one of the things is a combined authority. Actually, what a combined authority is, is police and fire being combined through the jurisdiction of a police and crime commissioner. I think speaking with some reasonable knowledge around the fire service, I think it's something that they welcome with open arms, but would, but would have to put a strong case in. So I think there's going to be plenty to talk to him about in the next period, but I do wonder whether he'll actually come to Buckingham and how we, how we factor that meeting in, because what we need to do is put down some of the concerns that we've got. Having him here just to talk to him isn't going to do it. I think we need to perhaps agree that we're going to invite him to a meeting, but take it to a suitable committee, put together some of the concerns in the community that we want to do, so that when we invite him here, we've already got an agreed thing to do. Otherwise he'll turn up and say, well, you've wasted my time. I've come here, you know, I'm being paid a lot of money for my time and you haven't done it. So we've got to crush the things in front of me. And I think where, where would that go? Probably not resources, probably not events. Think maybe, maybe it should go to environment, maybe, because it's most of the things would be environmental things. But I do think wherever it goes, to leave it to the town clerk, to point it to a committee, so that we do correspond with him, not, yes, we want you, and then when he comes, we're not ready for it. You know, I think that's the way to do it. Otherwise he will look unprofessional, we've accused him of not responding, so we need to make sure that we respond properly.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Stutford. We clearly need a proper agenda for that meeting. Town clerk, can you advise when, where would be the best place to fit a meeting with the police and crime commissioner?
Not making a discussion to what we would like to put on the agenda.
Oh, yes, indeed, but where, please, there needs to be a meeting to invite you to.
But that's just, the meeting would be a full council meeting. Either a meeting on the diary or if he can't make a meeting, then insert a meeting.
An extraordinary meeting.
I'm sure the meetings were a less formal meeting.
Yeah, the less formal meeting.
I suspect members would prefer the meeting to be in public. In terms of discussion, the problem is, this role does cover potentially, you can make an argument, reach as a committee, so logically it would be resources, I suppose, to have that discussion. Or an informal group of members, if some members wanted to, some ideas, or I can put it on the agenda for resources, then if other members want to maybe make any suggestions for resources, you're not on the resources committee. So resources is the only, the only logical place to have discussion about it.
Those with, you know, a view could join a small group to, to form an agenda of questions or what we'd like to discuss with him. And I guess we're not looking at a meeting this side of the summer break, we're looking probably in the autumn. Councillor Harvey.
Yeah, just building on what the town clerk said, I think maybe an informal meeting of councillors of interest first, and then from that report going to resources for, for agreements and then back to full council as well, I would say. I mean, we can discuss it in, in resources. I can see councillor Stutford's hands going up saying, why we add an extra loop here. But I think, I think some of the discussion around this might feel a bit more workshopy than, than committee, but I'm, I'm easy.
And in the meantime, probably we need to respond to him and say, we would like to take you up on that offer and we'll look for a suitable date.
Yeah.
I'd just say, last year, I'd like councillor Colly to be involved in that, where we have a subgroup meeting and, and I'd like John to be involved because he has got some experience of how the police systems work and I think that will be important to how we gaze that meeting and Mark knows how it works. So I hope that both of them are available because they've got that experience, that some of us are good at asking questions and not got that experience.
Thank you, councillor.
My proposal, Mayor, was that we meet, that he meets with the town council to discuss issues locally and work together to make Buckingham even safer. That's my proposal, which has been seconded. Anything else? Would need an amendment.
Okay. So are we, are we happy to go with Mark's or with councillor Colly's proposal without amendment or do we need, is somebody going to?
Sufficient.
I'll put an amendment, but we agree councillor Colly's proposal with pre-preparation meetings in advance of agreement that it goes to full council. And so that, that way it allows the town clerk and everyone else to mash it, whether it's, as John suggests, a sub-meeting then up to, we've got to do it, let's just do it properly to make sure we don't get caught out afterwards, you know?
Thank you.
If that, if that's okay.
I accept the amendment if it's seconded us.
And, yeah. Okay. Are there votes on this?
We're voting in any manner.
So we're approving on the amendment.
No, it's been accepted.
You'd have to vote to accept the amendment, right?
Yeah.
It's been accepted.
Those happy with the amendment?
That's unanimous.
Thank you. And then we have the proposal as an amendment. Those in favour?
That's unanimous.
Thank you. And now we've got review of policies and delegated arrangements as required by standing orders, section five, eighteen point one, to review, amend or confirm the delegation arrangements to committees, subcommittees, employees and other local authorities. Are we happy to accept that? Those in, those in favour, please show. unanimous, thank you. And committee terms of reference, environment committee initially. Those in favour?
No.
No, sorry. Councillor time.
Just have a small comment if I may. Item five, it's a typo, there just needs to be a vice put in with chairman. So the committee shall elect vice chair stroke vice chairman.
Yeah.
Is that the same?
No, it isn't. They're all okay on the rest of them.
So those in favour of that correction, please show.
Absolutely unanimous.
Thank you. And resources committee. Those in favour, those show please. Planning committee.
Oh.
Very diligent.
At the bottom of the pages, it's got version four draft. Are we voting on a draft?
Often with footers and headers on some of these documents, we've got last year's footers and headers, when they've agreed it down to like it as today's. So it won't say draft anymore.
It would just say version four.
It'd say, well, say version five, then it'll change.
Okay, but the top says version four in the box.
Changed that as well.
Okay.
And there's, then have made.
I thought we, sorry, I thought we would have been voting, discussing actual things till we knew, that's how we normally do it, isn't it, Charlie? But I suppose there is that lag, isn't it, in what's out there and what we're looking at.
There is.
So I'll let you off.
Thank you.
Those in favour of the planning committee? Terms of reference?
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Town centre and defence committee. Those in favour?
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Development working group, the only thing, I've no problem with the wording, but they're not currently meet, they've agreed not to meet for the time being exactly.
Yeah, so this time last year, we agreed not for the group to go into hiatus because the subcommittee of people have been very similar by considering the people on. So at the moment, probably just to keep the terms of reference there, so it's there if we want it. It may be something, I know the community board's currently reviewing what it does and what its subgroups and things are. So once we know exactly what the community board's new approaches, then we might like to review that group to see if the community board is in some form still bringing those people together. If the community board takes a different direction, then we might want to reintroduce it on the COVID work group because of that effect.
So with that sort of clarification, those happy to accept? Please, councillor. Thank you. And the stopping confidential matters committee.
What's wrong there then, Martin?
No, no, just checking then, so it says version two point two in the box and version one at the bottom, that you updated the version three, will that become then?
Yeah.
I'm just clarifying, the mayor isn't a member of that ex officio. Stopping. No, no, partial. Okay.
You do see this as an answer.
Yeah. So those in favour of those terms of reference? And the communications strategy group?
I won't mention it.
Wait a minute.
He's on it.
The same point again.
Yeah. You know, just for Martin, it's communicating, it has got strategy.
Those in favour of those terms of reference?
That's unanimous.
Thank you. And the appeals committee?
Well, that didn't mean to those in appeals.
We'll start up the terms of references.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Eighteen point three, committee choices. We've got that list, I'll show it to us. Councillor Harvey, will you? No, you are. Those in favour, well, noting it, that received and agreed.
Yeah, I see.
That's unanimous.
And standing orders and financial regulations. We've got appendix Q, which is the adoption of appropriate standing orders. The councillor Harvey?
Just to double check, we put the, no, get them to say, overall, sorry, sorry.
Those in favour of the adoption of the standing orders?
That's unanimous.
Thank you. And the appropriate financial regulations. Those in favour?
Let me get them.
Councillor, nothing there?
I'm there.
Okay, those in favour of review and adoption?
That's unanimous.
Thank you. And the review of arrangements with other local authorities? And it's, councillor Stutford.
Just to check, because we took a decision, didn't we, to recommend that the town clerk had authority to meet and discuss section one oh six in advance of agreement, took that, voted on it and whatever, that in some way, I couldn't say I did that, I see the shots from the town clerk, because that's an important fact, that sometimes the planning committee acts in one way to do with plan application, but quite often there's conversations to do with possible adoptions and whatever, their conversations need to take place in continuity, where the officers can do that who aren't prejudiced by the decision which could be to agree or not agree with application. Have we got that included?
It's all the appropriate to be in that document, because this is about arrangements which are formalised and made in contract design. So you're talking about the day to day role, my role, again, to have negotiations.
Can I just be sure it's somewhere written down?
Yes, well, it's agreed a minute, as you refer to.
Thank you, so councillor, I need to know because that's very key.
Thank you. So those in favour of that?
That's.
Thank you. And the representation, we really need to go through this line by line. Access for all. At the moment, the representatives of councillor Willis and councillor Collins, that's a coincidence here, councillor Willis, any, continue on.
Uh, yes.
I understand the access for all, but we need to.
I believe they have one. Which one did they give? Unfortunately, I have worked on that paper, but I think that, oh no, this is the upcoming meeting, isn't it? Uh, yeah, I should be free to attend to the.
And one of the, on the agenda, it says, view and update work with external bodies and arrangements for reporting back. So once you've been to that meeting, perhaps you can report back to the appropriate committee or council.
I can submit a report to the, the town clerk himself.
And it can go forward and we usually receive minutes as well for these.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And we need to check with councillor Collins if she's going to return on that as well. Council Rebell association of local councils. And that's councillor Harvey. Are you happy to?
I'm happy to continue.
And to? I'm sure it's helpful to have that continuity. It takes a while to understand procedures and processes. Thank you. Council Rebell Transport Users Group.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I, I find that they have their meetings on days I've got committee meetings. And so it's important that somebody attends, like can be in Howsbury, did something and it just relies on councillor Harvey being available. I think that if somebody else is available to take that up, I think it's appropriate that the town council has two representatives. I've noted that last meetings, it's always been when I've been in a select committee meeting or planning meeting, there's AD and, and, and you can't be in two places once I've tried it, you just can't do it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who's got an interest in joining that group and be willing to attend? Can you, councillor Harvey, can you really, is there a usual time for this meeting?
No, it happens every, every three months or so. It's not, it's not, it's one of owners. I only tend to go to meetings that happen in Buckingham, they switch automatically in Buckingham and else. I have been to a couple of Buckingham meetings in the past and I've got time and I do go. They're always fairly intense, but informative meetings. And if you're committed to private transport, as I am, then the more the merrier, really. So if somebody else could join instead of Robin, that would be really, 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 really good.
Is there any of the media thinking, yes, that's what I would like to do? The other possibility is that if you find you're not able to attend a meeting, then we could ask for something to stay on it.
I'm happy to stay on it, Mayor, I've just wanted to give other people an opportunity to do it. I think just that I, last government meeting, I've definitely been in other meetings and conscious that there may be a real important issue and we need two councillors to represent us. But always at the clash, it has choice.
Thank you. And we have to leave it like that and councillor Harvey, thanks for letting us to continue directly. It might amuse you to know, because I read through those minutes and it took me a long while and I even went on doing this Google Maps, trying to find out where Leyes Hill in Buckingham was, L E Y S. And it took me a long while for the penny to drop and it was Leyes Hill. And Annington Road isn't.
Yeah, that's all.
I'm just, actually, I'm saying nothing.
But anyway, there we are. Buckingham Bardig Council, we've got councillor Willis and councillor Davies.
I'd like to put myself forward to join councillor Willis on that. What does the Willis is, is, is continuing?
I can definitely continue. And I, I'll get in touch with the town clerk to also see if we're getting another meeting up to date, but if we're not, someone wants to continue.
We, we do have a date for the Bardig trial, it's the fourth of October, seven to ten. But I don't know if there's a meeting of Bardig Council in the interim.
There's nothing in the diary, mate. I'll keep it in.
Thank you. I'm sure we're all happy for councillor Davies to join councillor Willis on that, great. And the Buckingham and Walcott Charities.
They don't come up to twenty twenty.
Okay, good. And Buckingham Community Warrimah Project, that's Leamington, councillor Davies and my staff. Are you happy to continue? Buckingham General Charities, happy to stay on the five, because they're all ongoing.
Yeah, they've, 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 yes, they've got the terms of year they started on, which is quite interesting.
And the Buckingham Youth Centre.
I'm happy to stay.
You have to stay.
Okay, thank you. And Citizens Advice. And that's, that's my self.
You'll, you'll have to stay up.
Goes with the job, I think. And the Christmas Parade Committee, that's not applicable.
May I comment on that? I'm not quite sure why the statement of road closure was put in place, et cetera, et cetera. It seems to be a bit detailed for, you know, what the outside body is.
Thank you.
Sorry, there you go. I'll say it again.
It's just because the town council funds and facilitates the event through the town centre events committees decisions. And the road closures facilitate legally through the town council. The actual organisation of the event, who's in it, is for the Christmas Parade Committee to determine i- informing the event. So that's really why it's probably not big. And as Martin's a long standing gentleman in the town centre, he informs everyone about it. Mostly it probably passes him by, really, because he can't ever go anywhere, because he's trapped in that tent most of the time, actually telling us what's going on. So, um, but that's basically how it is. That explains it. And I think the, the reason it's logical for councillor Tri to be on it is because they need to know what he's going to say when he's got the panel. And we all need to know what Martin's going to say when he's got the panel sometimes.
Thank you very much. And I'm sure councillor Maudius.
Hmm.
Metro Action Alliance, councillor Harvey, that's you again?
Uh, two, two things. I'm not quite sure where the role came to encourage thirty six parishes and local area forum. Trying to think of this, isn't it? Um, to be beyond the Metro Unity, that's out with, and to our, to our terms of reference here in Buckingham, I think. So I would say delete that sentence, um, from any future versions of this. Um, and also councillors and I have checked beforehand, and we are willing to do a job share on this, um, to, to, to support. Although we're doing actual lives.
Excellent. Thank you.
Really good.
That's good.
Only the mandate to say job share and to.
Well, and also to.
Just put that down too, I think.
Yeah. Thank you. And Leyes Hill Medical Centre Forum, councillor Stutford.
I wonder why it's got N A I, because we actually appointed two of us to it, so.
I think.
Yeah, we took the decision that it's non applicable.
No, what, what that means is, sorry, the date column is non applicable. So actually there's somewhere, it's just that they're just ongoing, so we review it every year, but it's not set. So we should probably end June twenty twenty to everything, but someone can do it, someone does.
Best of my knowledge, it hasn't met for a very, very long time. If it has met, please inform us. So it would be nice if we at least asked through our two representatives to know, now we're at a lockdown, when it is going to meet. Because they might be able to enlighten us with some pearls from it, um, um, that we don't know, which is the whole point of them being there. But it's not their fault they haven't met. Covid has done for that, but, um, but, um, maybe we should through that and ask and try and find out when they're next going to have a meeting. Because it's not their fault, they don't afford me.
And the Buckinghamshire Youth Community Board. Uh, that's councillor Donoghue and councillor Harvey.
I believe you stand. Can councillor Donoghue, our representative, councillor Harvey's our deputy, absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councillor Trump.
Yeah, could we just have a bit of, um, formatting tidying up there? Because it looks as though all the others have a, 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 a clear line between the, uh, representations and that one doesn't. Or the other one, next one.
Hmm.
Yes, does it, does the next one?
No.
No, it's, it's two, two bits.
Yeah, I, I, I think we mainly cross their page, don't we?
Yeah.
North Bucks Parishes Planning Consortium, that's councillor Ralph. But no, you're happy to continue.
Oh, thank you, mayor. Yes, I'm, I'm happy to do. Um, nevertheless, um, I see it as the job for the deputy chair, which I am currently. And if I get booted out of office in the upcoming next meeting, I would want to pass that over to whoever is deputy chair.
Of the planning.
Of the planning committee, yeah, if you understand.
So we could actually amend that to, to say the deputy chair of planning. Would people, it's a slightly different way of dealing with it, but people happy with that? The thing with the deputy chair of planning.
No, I, 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 I suppose we don't have that. We allow the meeting to take place, find out what the outcome of the meeting is and discuss it in the meeting, who would want to do it? Because at that point, listening to councillor Anthony Ralph, that, that there'd never be a question to ask. But at the moment, we, we're answering questions we don't know the answer to. What best is like earlier this evening, to find out what the answer to the question is before we say it. So, um, um, I think we just leave it for the, for the committee to decide based upon the meeting and who's willing, not arbitrarily put somebody into that.
Councillor Ralph now and then.
Yeah, you know, and that'd be the, the, I'm sure the chairman, whoever he or she, the chairman of that committee, will guide the committee appropriately.
I mean, this is on the agenda for this meeting rather than planning committee. But I guess if planning committee, then there would be a, a more suitable representative, that could come back to all council for ratification. But councillor Ralph would remain on this time being. Are you happy with that?
Yeah.
Sure. Thank you, thank you. And the Pontio Group, that's the, the mayor and councillor Harvey, councillor Harvey.
Well, obviously this was hard, maybe because I was mayor. Um, I'm happy to continue, but I'm also happy to set, set back and let somebody else step in to step into the, into place. It's all, it's all a action for you to, you to do so.
Thank you. Personally, I, I feel your presence on that group has been really beneficial, actually. Um, you know, for that continuity and, and because you've got an eye to the detail of what's happening as well. But certainly, um, at some point, we will need to have different representation. But if you're happy to continue at the moment, then.
Okay.
Councillor Stutford.
I know, um, we, I know A is very much involved in the university, um, many ways, would it? Um, in the sense that it would be appropriate that, that, you know, for any reason, John couldn't attend upon to meetings that we would put A D down a second.
Oh, we've got A D just like that.
No, you know, that, I'm, I know that, but I mean, he, he just, he's, he's in first contact. I mean, just that I know that he does, I watch what people do, so he, he, he speaks for example.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely, Rob, then, very used to coming on the spot. Um, I care about the university, not support it. And if, um, if you need any support, um, on your group, I'd support, I'm going to meet him and have to step in.
Okay.
Right. All right.
Um. Tree Warden.
Still got some trees left, haven't we?
I pressed something I shouldn't, just sounds like I'm finding the page. One hundred and ten. So Tree Warden, councillor Heatherington, councillor Stutford and myself. Yeah. Are we happy to?
Absolutely. Great balance group.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey?
Yeah, just really thinking of what councillor Osmond just said. I'm thinking what we do with the, um, uh, the community board. Is it worth putting your name down as deputy to stand in? Like, I can't go in a similar way that I do with, you know, with, with Lisa, with community board. Would that be a solution?
Yeah, I have to go out.
Okay. Is it sort of backup, yeah?
Because then we can include you on the circulation list as well. And, and again, just makes things a bit more continuous.
A bit like it's the mayor or deputy now as well. Thank you.
Why would you guys say anything about what they want about it? It's a day.
Thank you. Um, Twinning Association, councillor Shaker and councillor Maudius.
I'm happy to continue, yes.
And the Royal Market Townsbury, I think councillor White. I don't know whether you know.
And that's why I think my case is a group.
Well, he's happy to continue. Yeah, thank you. Now, just to, I started off on, we, when we started through this list. It was councillor Willis asked about reporting back, and it's the same for everybody, really. Uh, we use a representative of the council or any outside body for us to bring any issues that are relevant and to the attention of town council and also to provide forward minutes to the town clerk so that they can be forwarded to councillors. Um. Councillor Donoghue.
Thank you. Um, just backing up what you're saying, where you meant that, um, for, um, back three or four years, I've been asking if the youth clubs minutes can come on our, um, agendas and, um, that's, they still haven't materialised. They did, do have meetings, I know they do. Um, but the community board, we get those through to the office, so they can be included in the agendas easily.
I, I, I do remember you saying it. I remember you saying it.
But it is important we're representing these groups. We get appropriate feedback. We don't want to be overwhelmed with pieces of paper, but when, when there are relevant items, they need to come back. Thank you.
Uh, I have, oh, I have actually, um, attended a couple of meetings with the youth club. Um, and I can forward that paperwork on to you. So.
Thank you. Councillor Ralph.
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, I seem to be hogging it when it comes to planning issues. I do a report, um, P P C, to the planning committee um, on the assumption that if there was something of particular interest, that would be filtered out. So you don't get overwhelmed with the like, because we can all talk for England there, too. So, um, I, I would plan to continue doing that unless you wanted to come directly to full council.
I think, I think we've got to take care, we don't intend to want to do paperwork and, and trust that our representatives to bring back issues that are appropriate. But maybe the minutes can be sent to the town council office so that there is a record of those meetings as well, which is available then if a particular councillor wanted to see those. And perhaps, perhaps we could even have, um, a message round that those minutes are available and anybody interested. What is that, two?
There's very little paper in the town council office these days. So if you come in, it's actually wanting to look at something, we do, we can keep the file in. Um, so if you email them to us, then we'll keep it on record. And there's nothing stopping you emailing around, around councillors, saying, I've just, I've just got these minutes. If you're interested, read them, if not, then leave them.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Shaker.
I was just going to say the twinning association meets every month. Surely people don't want to see the minutes of every monthly meeting?
No, I don't.
So my suggestion would be there. In fact, since I'm now going, since most of this is going to relate to the events committee anyway, that I do a report.
Thank you.
Since I'm now on the events committee, uh, that I report to that committee. And if the committee then decides it needs to be brought to the attention of the council, full council will do that.
Thank you. We've got to use our common sense about this, but I think maybe, maybe, and I'm speaking for myself here as well, the bodies I, maybe I've been not been as forward with some of the things that I've been dealing with as I should have been. We all need to make sure that we are, uh, feeding back appropriately. Thank you. Councillor Stutford.
Just to say, I'm, I'm a bit of a character, if we don't meet often at the moment, and when we do meet, um, and we'll have a set minutes, but we can't actually give you set minutes till we've been agreed to approve these meetings. So that's a, you know, the, the actual trust has to have the right to agree those minutes.
Sorry, which one?
Buckingham Barge Town Trust. Um, so, um, as chairman, I've got to call meeting, I can't call meeting just to agree the minutes. So, um, I need to have a reason. So we will get, I think it's important we do see them and they come.
Thank you. Councillor.
Um, just a quick thought that I've had. Um, would it be appropriate, uh, to have a listing of all the, say, groups we're part of? And then sign them back to the relevant meetings? But it's a recurring item on the agenda that we have to give a verbal update or maybe something along those lines? Would that be better or?
Definitely, like the general time of the town clerk.
I suppose what we could do this week, and in the office, we could go through bodies, work out which fits best for each committee and just have a bullet list of those organisations at the end of each committee's agenda. And send for a verbal update on any of those items, just as a prompt for members.
Yeah.
We're taking, um, Anya's point about. Yeah, sorry. I'm taking Anya's point there, where she reports, because it could be that sometimes it'll be reported, sometimes it'll be events. And when it comes out, it's just a burden of the amount of paperwork and time for the accounts that quite often other meetings can be just procedural, in which case it's very difficult to say to anyone, there's decisions that you need for that.
Yeah, that's appropriate.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody happy with that? And Dave?
Yeah.
Use our common sense. Um, item eighteen point seven, entry of land and assets. Um, appendix U.
No, it is.
Councillor Stutford.
On long and long, but it's on the asset values. Um, and it's, I think it was Buckingham Youth Centre. It didn't, it, it repeats the value of purchase. The value of the property would be more than the value of the purchase. I was concerned because then the next document we're going to know is insurance. I'm sure it's a typo. Um, where we haven't actually valued the building, I, uh, I'm sure it's worth more than that. And the land didn't tell me, did it not? I'm off the 15th now, because the law of the land's worth more than that. Um, um, I'm sure the town council will refuse it. Um, I shouldn't be doing it anyway, but I do think we do need to get a better price for that.
It's, um, it's fifty thousand, yes.
And I think that we just need a more realistic figure for the value of the community centre, because if we're only insuring it fifty thousand, um, we're going to be a bit shy on the repair of it if it burns down.
Sure.
Um, so, um, I, I'm short today, so, actually, I think it's just a long thing we've been putting for the print. I'm sure there's a figure somewhere. I'm not going to ask the town clerk to suggest one tonight. I'm going to ask him with, I know that we've got a realistic figure in there for the value of the property.
If I may, actually, two, two points I'd like to add. One is that, um, we're using an R B S report here. So actually, the current value is the correct figure here. The insurance values are, some of them are slightly different. And also we have just agreed environments to resurvey our properties for a fresh insurance valuation. So once we get the fresh insurance valuation, then we'll go back and input data to make sure it's correct, that's been reported back. We need to make that.
You know, well, this didn't make sense to me.
It makes the toilets worse.
Yes.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I was, I was reading through all this fascinated by what we own. I, what is the status of the Tindrit Road Cemetery? I can't see it listed in there at the moment as, as an asset.
Town council have not yet bought the Tindrit Road Cemetery. That's a good answer. I can exit the meeting now, so it's a. Right. And so we are very close.
Right. Could I also add, on page hundred and sixteen and hundred and seventeen, cemetery is spelt five different ways, that could be.
We have gold screw pins, well.
Thank you.
Let's go, example.
Thank you.
My own goals.
Um. A lot of these typos probably are perpetuated from the last few years when it's spotted, then. Hopefully, as the years go by, they'll be. Probably some result, um, eight, eighteen, are we happy to?
No, for my. Yeah. It's just, um, a placing, I think, uh, of two items. So we have on, uh, page one, one, two, under council meeting stroke room hire dash chamber, the interactive wireless screens times two. Q E Q P O seven. But down at, hmm, page hundred and fifteen, we've got office equipment dash chamber, which is the movable screen lift. They should probably go together.
They should indeed. The correct item, but it needs to be studied.
Yeah, just, just placing.
Thank you.
Just to ask, because for the parts, um, you're a team show, such and such, and then it goes into later down the page, um, um, it's a few big, and it states what the value that is. And then they, my, my understanding of it, um, there is so much discussion about in other places. I think Aiden might correctly came up at the community board, didn't it, about additional CCTV in the town centre at one meeting? And I'm not sure whether that went forward and whom has the CCTV and whether the properties. My understanding is that we provide a system which is monitored and should be visually, that figure that we've got in there.
It's a bit of a picture.
Uh, I've got it. It's the page above hundred and seventeen, um, uh, of one nine, of one ninety seven pages. It's just those things, it didn't make sense. That's it. Hold on. Um, yeah, it, it's just that all those things are realistic, because. Yes, if we're going to replace that, would that be what it would be?
It, it's, it's quite a long system. It may well be, although we'll probably get something completely different next time.
Would it?
We are, we are currently pricing up for a new system. We are, we are currently pricing up for a new system and we are hoping to try and help. I couldn't, it, it's very, you wouldn't get a life replacement fee for the same thing.
Just it's like, um, some of the prices like those here, Kentag is, Kentag was a councillor, um, on, I think he was a royal. So it actually was a Lefford Abbey District councillor many years ago. And he, um, and he was a town councillor and that's why it's called the Kentag Play Area. We named it after four M and after one. And he lived in, he lived in, um, he lived in, um, where the play area is there, in Ridgeway.
Thank you. Are we happy with that inventory of land and assets?
Yep.
Thank you. Insurance is eighteen point eight. And the subscription.
Difficult to get any kind of that.
Councilor Harvey?
Yeah, just one question. I see that we pay BMA, obviously. Um, but I thought that included our subscription. Yes, and we just pay now as well.
So we, we do pay one subscription to that BMA, BMKLC, which includes the now payment. But we break that down the way presented to members, so you can see the proportion that goes to BMKLC and the portion that goes to now. Okay, thank you.
Are we happy with those subscriptions? Yeah, agreed. You can't some confidence.
But we know.
Um, I did notice it still refers to A D D C, um, in page two, number four dot.
That's fine, we will remember.
Matt, are we happy with that?
Yeah, great.
And eighteen point eleven, three minimums, eight and eight.
Members may notice that we've recommended in this effectively doubling the cost of purchasing the office. So for many years, we've taken these sheets, we've updated twenty pence sheet, which is the one that the library and that chart is. That's something we did for a bit.
Members become so much more expensive as well.
I think the only special issue is that is it staff?
Are we happy with that?
Agreed.
General opportunities policy, eighteen point five.
Questions with town clerk, um, where it's a deep rock inside, I didn't see that. It gives the right to join a trade union. Um, and just, which is a huge opportunity, an opportunity for life and it should be. Any member of our staff wants to join a trade union, the right to, it should be included in the system.
Something relevant to these opportunities.
Well, especially referred to staff then, so I can be, I, maybe in the staff handbook, I would check if it is or not.
Which is the legal contract.
Well, I, I think it's important that our staff have the right to do that. And we don't prevent them doing it if they so choose to, or if they're asking to do it. It's something they have to do with their own vision, but not to have it in there. Other bodies now they're council staff, unions, we have got more staff now than we used to have. And we're afraid of being a union and we should be more concerned about our decision basis. It is in the staff handbook, it should be reflected in this document.
Yeah, but we're not stopping that to drive the union.
No, but it isn't in here, it's equal opportunities. That is an equal opportunity. More so if you've got a disability, you might want the union to act on that behalf. Or staff that might need to apply to a union, that will never happen. We might not always be such nice people as we are.
Thank you for pointing that out. Can the town clerk just to check on that and bring it back in? And if it needs to, this policy needs to be updated. One of the things I wanted to highlight in, in light of the recent discussions that we've had. Um, often the town clerk is committed to valuing the diversity of the community it serves and promoting equality of opportunity. And I do think it's important that we emphasise this in light of some of the issues that have been around recently. Um, it is on the bottom of our agendas as well, but it's something, it's not just words. This is something we need to be ensuring that we do value the diversity of our community. And we serve everybody from whatever background.
Indeed, absolutely.
I think to assure you, um, today when we were putting together stuff for future agenda, um, um, the town clerk was talking about the, the diversity event. Um, and he was also talking about disability access. And, and the officers were talking about it within the office about what we need to do to represent, but it needs the idea that i- 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 it is being treated through and it's something will come through in events around that area. So it is being discussed, it's not to cite anyone or to do anything, but how we conduct ourselves, how we age a bit. So the officers are really working according to what that statement says. The officers act for us as the council, um, we don't, as councillors, act for the council. So I think we're quite close to where they would be. Policy, if you want to change it, to thirty, that's another question.
Councilor Harvey?
Yeah, I gave a good statement when they would say that diversity is a fact, inclusion is an act. Um, I think you should be with my group.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Thank you. Code of Conduct, item nineteen. I'm assuming that we've been through this part recently. We can just agree that.
Actually, I had a good time, but it's, um, I mean, once again, we got more kind of trying in the future. And it seems to be non-bellied theme of code of conduct training. Uh, um, I think that perhaps I would suggest that our code of conduct, as it is, okay. Doesn't, it's not very descriptive around, um, when you have to declare an interest in something for, for prejudice. Not very specific. I think it needs to be firmed up around policy and what the law is. Because what we have, when we have a situation that, oh, you, you need to declare an issue. We have an argument about with the council meeting, whether they need to declare an issue. And then it's not, you're going for the minutes of our council. Um, you can see plenty of opportunities in the minutes of this council where it's been robustly challenged. Now, myself, I know, I'm, I myself, we saw in a code of conduct, we have to appear with, we tend to meet in. And that was in breach of this code of conduct here, was in breach of that. We'd have to leave because we would breach our own code of conduct in another party. So I'm not sure that when it declares official outside interest, it actually is specific enough. Can I ask through town clerk that he thinks, um, of working for that area? Because I think it's something that continues to haunt us. We are all involved in lots of different things and I don't think it's prescriptive enough. And we always then at the meeting, ask the town clerk to deliberate on it. It instantly puts the town clerk at a difference to the people who are disagreeing in the meeting. And I think we need some formal words in there that town clerk can read out to declare and agree. So that there's no ambiguity in this. Um, I will push it if that area comes up because it's important that we do recognise that. And, um, and so often for convenience, we, we acquiesce. And I think that, you know, if I've got prejudice, I want you to tell them to leave the meeting. And, and if somebody asks about prejudice, I want them to leave the meeting. And I think how we declare it and what we do is quite a, a careful thing. And we, as we grow as a council, we have more responsibility, more outside interests. There's lots of money involved and it's important that we do it. I know Amy brings me, the Buckinghamshire councils look at it again, look at it around training. And I think it's the right thing to do. Um, and I don't think our, 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 our own paperwork, it's nice to read, but I don't think it just gives you a yes or a no to any of those answers. And I like things that obsess yes and no, because I then know the answers. A proposal that would strengthen it up.
Could I suggest, we have got almost a code of conduct session training for all our councils to get a bit of support on it. So could I suggest we have that training first? Because our code of conduct currently is what exactly says the Buckinghamshire councils, because that way it works. So to change our wording presents other problems. I understand what we're trying to solve. So my suggestion would be we have the code of conduct training first and then we can have another discussion about where to go and take it. At that point, the office may strongly agree with you, in which case we can revise it. I'm nervous about changing, moving away from what Buckinghamshire council says in their code without members having had access to that training first.
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you. Councilor Harvey?
Um, I just concur with what the town clerk has just said. It isn't just the Buckinghamshire councils code that we've more or less adopted. Um, it's also the NAC.
Yeah.
And LGA code that we've adopted. And I think the idea that we can go up with some formal words, that is going to be better than the dozens and dozens and dozens of councillors and offices being in, in place, I think is not one is, unless there are some specific words on the table we need to bear. I think the general idea that it's not clear, it's never going to be clear because it's very hard to put something as, as vague into a box anyway, in my view, and I would concur strongly with what I would just say.
One suggestion is we've all got, um, the personal declarations forms. And it's probably worth at this point, as we start a new council year, to read, have a look at our own page and make sure that it is up to date. It's going to be quite a good thing for us to do. Is it something to?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just that I accept the town clerk's explanation. I look forward to the training. Having sat on the standards committee and a couple of councils, um, in the past. Um, I know how much these things can, um, exercise the committee. Um, so, um, and it's a lot of waste of people's time. So I think we need to look at this as a training and listen to training, not interpret it to our own favour. And I think we tend to do that sometimes.
Thank you. People happy to confirm that. Um, giving of apologies at meetings. Um, really arising from the fact that we're now live broadcasting our meetings and we may not want to let the, the whole world know when we're unlike, when our house might be able to seem sensible. Would it be possible at this point in our, I know it's from out live on YouTube, but perhaps for the minutes indicated in the new way, that those that are absent today, is that possible or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So reflect that in these minutes and. Thank you. Future meetings, we've had a revised calendar of, of meeting dates. I think is that in relation to the code of conduct training and the moving of the resources?
It's the movement of the resources meeting, which is now on the eleventh, fourth July. And also just to note, half the way to June six, the Community Diversity and Inclusion Working Group was on the twenty eighth of June.
For those. And item twenty two, reports from representatives on outside bodies. Well, I don't know, but is there anything additional that anybody wants to add that listed there? Ellsbury Down Transport User Group, Buckingham Dementia Rights and Ellsbury Down Association, both the councils, so the three listed.
Noted.
Thank you for bringing it forward.
Sorry, ma'am. I just, I don't recall the, the end of what the town clerk said, the community diversity and inclusion on the twenty eighth of June.
Yes.
So that's the workshop that we were recommended to have by the.
No, no, the Diversity and Inclusion Group.
This is the group that's been waiting for me for some time.
Our, our group. Have we got a date confirmed that we have a code of conduct training?
That they've got the quality training.
The quality training.
Quality training booked into Monday, the fourth of June, fourth of July, sorry, at seven PM. We haven't yet got a date for the code of conduct training.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Well.
Yeah, sure.
Could the, um, spreadsheet show the, uh, communication subgroup, uh, be online or in person?
It was all.
But now we're alternating and it will be. Thank you very much.
Item twenty two, merit engagement, see, only thing, means sent this and I presume it is copied, cut and pasted into the, um, the agenda. I, it's not Karen's house, it's Karen's house. And I don't know quite, I think, I don't know how that slipped in. So I often point on the people's typos and I do my own. Sorry about that. I'm just taking it easy. Thank you for everything that you bring to.
Yep.
From my position, thank you. Shares and announcements, it's really about the forthcoming events. Um, mayor making is on June, Friday, June the tenth. And not all councils have replied yet saying whether they're coming or not. Can we please have those replies back, um, as soon as possible? Within the next twenty four hours of this officer, you know, we do need to know who's coming and who's not coming. So we need, if you can't come, it's first thing. We've just got, um, celebrate Buckingham Day this Thursday. So as many of us as possible. I know that even people who are working sometimes work on bank holidays, so I appreciate that. But if you can, can you come in the autumn park? We've got music in the market on Friday. Um, and it's good to have that back in the town centre. It's what we push for, it's back in the town centre. The town will be alive with the sound of music. We've got the pitch on Saturday, they still have some fields. And the civic service on Sunday, so.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock at the parish church. So please do come along to all of those if you can, if not as many of you as possible. Councilor Shaker?
I think you won't know, but I, I mean, those are some reprisal civics that come. You see the acknowledgement that it is, and I normally get a group receipt. I mean, um, it'd be nice to know because when you turn up your representing us, we're, we're supporting you. Um, and it's important, and if it was hopefully packed and we turn up. They pre- like this, I presume they'd have some, um, nice dark corners for sorting. Um, but, um, but I definitely think they might be looking for it to make sure that those who have responded know.
Civil service?
Civil service.
Oh, okay.
Um, because they haven't, um, might not have managed to be corrected at any point, but I can't find it.
Or probably not, because I'm participating in the service. The civic service is open to the public, so I'm talking about the mayor making, not the civic service. Please respond to that, whether you're coming on.
I have to remember.
Yeah, well, the civic service is actually open to the public. It'd be lovely to see as many people there as possible, but I don't think that was all the invitation.
Yeah, it was from the church.
Thank you. Please RSVP to officer fifty church dot.
We haven't had any acknowledgements as I do now. Immediately give the apologies, you like apologies, but they're pathetic apologies. Because as you said, many people have to work with that apologies, they support the wrong people. Um, they might not be able to be there, but it seems that that isn't happening at any reason. Or that maybe we can just get that quality of.
Thank you. But apart from that, just thank you all for your attendance this evening. And we've got through a lot of business. I'm, I'm quite surprised we're finished before nine o'clock. So let's give you, thank you, intra-caps, all the twenty seventh of June, full council will be open. Full council will be open between. Thank you. Thank you.
And it's sixty of time to. Just today. You've got time to, in sixty, which is. Yes, it's a national wording.
Can I just say?